Okay, it's seven o'clock. Time to call the meeting to order. Call the Westmore City Council Meeting to Order, January 19th, 2023, 7:00 PM. I'll ask Ms. Kelly to call her up.
Jones?
Here.
Calvert?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Porter? Mayor?
Here. Now, see, I went just a little bit out of order, but that's okay. But Doug Brown's gonna do our devotion tonight.
Yes, I will. Let's bow our heads, please. Father, have we just thanked you, Father, for this opportunity to be together tonight? We pray, Father, that this body meets, Father, this meeting. We pray that we make the right decisions, Father, that bless our city, increase its wealth, Father, and just capacity of people, people who love each other and nurture each other and want to do better for themselves and others. We ask, Father, that you'll give us the ability and grace, Father, for forgiveness. We pray, Father, for those who are less fortunate than us. We ask, Father, that you'll just, we always remember your son, who gave his life for us, Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Now, I'll ask the stand with due to the pledge of allegiance.
My allegiance is through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item is to adopt the agenda for tonight. All of y'all have had time to look at the agenda. I've got one item that I want to add to the agenda, and that is the bid opening on the polls setting for the new meters. We've got two bids that we'll open tonight, so I'll add that to the route.
Motion to amend the agenda. Second.
Okay. Motion to amend the agenda by Councilman Calvert and seconded by Councilman Jones. Any discussion on amending the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, black sign. Carries amend the agenda now. Make entwined motion to adopt the agenda as is.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda. Second.
Motion made to adopt the agenda as amended, second also. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, black sign. Motion carries. We adopted an agenda for tonight, and that will be put on the very end of bid opening. Next item is the approval of minutes for the special call meeting on 11/15/22.
I'll make that. Go ahead. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from November 15, 2022, special call meeting. Second.
Motion's been made to approve the minutes 11/15/22, special call meeting, and seconded by, motion made by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman Jones. Any discussion? I will make a note, or note that on the minutes, if you'll notice, let me pull up here, that it does not state on the minutes the purpose of the call meetings. And both of our special call meetings, or the next one also, is a special call meeting. It is only stated there what the purpose of that meeting was allowed, for what purposes the special call meeting was. And the November 15th doesn't say that, nor does the January bid say that. Any more discussion about this? You want to pass this with the intent that those corrections be made?
Yeah, I would like to change my motion to make those changes correct.
You'll cover the second one.
Yeah.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the minutes for January 15th, 2022, special call meeting, with the changes that we discussed. All in favor, sing about saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, black sign. Motion carries. All right, January 5th, 2023, special call meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from January 5th, special call meeting, with the amendment that the notation be made, what the purpose of the meeting was.
Purpose of the meeting. I have a second.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Jones, taken by Councilboarders, to approve these minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, sing about saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, black sign. Motion carries. The next item will be November 2022 financial statement, approval. Approval of November financial statement.
I'll make a motion that we approve the November 2022 financial statement as is.
That was great.
That was just what I said.
All right, motion's been made by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman Calvert.
I just want a discussion of the notes to the November financial statement. On the second page of the statement itself is the, can you explain a little bit the credit for refunding Kelly on that, on those three line items, beginning with 411 and 412? I think they're going to be in there. I mean, I think it says it's refund of overpayment previous fiscal year. I just wonder what overpayment that's speaking to. But that's, that's an answer I could get later.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know what line I just, I'm worried.
Oh, totally good.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, approve the November 2022 financial statement. Sing about saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, black sign. Motion carries. December 2022 financial statement. Have a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve the December 2022 financial statement.
Motion made by Councilman Calvert to approve the 2022 December 2022 financial statement. Have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilboarders. I do have one question, and Kelly, you might not be able to answer it on this statement here, on the, and Chief Charlie may be able to answer the question, too, on the police department's line item, telephone bill. It run, run in water from 1,300 to 1,800, 1,500, 1,700, and all of a sudden in December jumped to 3,400.
They look like to me the previous month was considerably less.
Yep.
So it looks like maybe a bill didn't come in, and over and over again. I'm not sure if that's the case, but.
We didn't have any changes or anything, so that must be the case. We didn't add anything, or.
Sure, they wouldn't have sent bills for it. I mean, they don't send two bills, do they? No.
I mean, there's.
Check a piece of, but we had a change in these things.
They're called bills. I don't know how many actually come for a police department thing.
Okay, all right. Well, you might know, check with Kelly on that. One more, and Chief Charlie might be able to answer this, too. On public service, the building inspector, it looks like that's, is that where Mr. Mills is paid from, on line item 174? It's on page four.
Is it on 4300?
Uh, 43, yep. Line item 174, building inspector.
I just brought my freezer in.
I don't feel that.
Public service?
Yes.
Line 174, building inspector. Yeah, I wasn't sure what that was. I think that is Steve Mills.
Uh-huh.
But I'll have to double check with her. I know that percentage of that top line item, 110, part of that goes toward, I think Aaron's salary. The 10, I think that's probably Steve Mills. I'm not 100% certain.
Okay.
Somebody else has a vote for county.
Okay.
I think that line item in the past has been 12,000 a month.
Okay, it's, I just noticed, it's over budgeted, so.
Right.
But I know Mr. Mills is backing off. I know he told me he wasn't going to do a whole lot more. Okay. We'll, maybe get some answers on that, see where it goes, where it goes to. I was thinking that line item 110 was probably, ain't that?
Part of his traces.
Traces.
Yeah, 75% of it, I think.
Okay.
Part of, whether his name, Aaron.
25% I think of just taking that line item.
All right. I had a question on page eight, line 264. Aaron, what was that, 23,000? We're over budget on that line.
What line is it?
Uh, 264. Was that where we bought those tiles? Shouldn't have been.
That's a dumb truck.
No, that is, let me make sure. Yeah, so that's water. That should be, maintenance and repair, what, you said 264?
Yes.
Uh, that should be materials from where we're getting water leaks fixed and things like that in the distribution system, so like piping, clamps, anything for repairs. So, like, the big water leaks that we've had this past year out on the main and galvin, that's where that would be coming out of.
That material would skyrocket, do that one?
Yeah, yes, every bit of it.
And the only other question I have is back on page seven, line 259, engineers, that's where we had the roads for the paving engineers.
Right.
259. Yeah, that's for the roads and whatever else the engineers are doing, or the heat pump and dikes is doing for us.
Uh-huh, all right. Those are all the questions I have.
All right. Hearing none, all in favor, passing December 2022 financial statement. Sing about us saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, black sign. Hearing none, motion carries. All right, there's no old business. Next item of business being new business. And the first thing on the agenda for that is to fill the vacancy of the council seat. We had three candidates. One candidate was disqualified because he hadn't lived in the city long enough. We interviewed two candidates, one of them being Raymond Miller, other being Byron Obern, Staples. And y'all had, y'all heard the interviews. How does the council want to do? They want to make a motion, or to appoint one of them? Are you going to vote on each one? How you want to do it?
I did want to announce my intention of staying since I was not here to hear the interviews.
Okay.
You have any preference?
So, it'd be always follow the name.
So if somebody wants to entertain a motion to appoint either one, we'll entertain that motion, we'll vote on it. And if, depending on how the vote goes, then they have to entertain another motion. Or we can ask two candidates to exit the room, and we'll take a vote on each one and go from there.
Which way do you think?
Either way, it's bound to be, either way.
I just call roll. You know, you have somebody nominated to vote to call roll, see if anybody gets three votes.
All right, somebody want to do that, we'll nominate, somebody will nominate both of them, and then we'll call the roll.
Oh, yeah, I can go ahead and nominate, you said. We nominate both at the same time?
Then you vote.
Yeah. I'd like to nominate both Raymond Miller and Orbin Staples to fill our vacant council seat.
A second.
Yeah, nomination, I'd like to.
Yeah, nomination, absolutely. It was called roll here in a minute.
Let's just some discussion first, you know, where y'all are discussing.
I don't think there's any discussion. I do know we, we had two good interviews, and councils make the best decisions they feel best here, so.
And I would just add on to that, that they were both men, or had the opportunity to give us their answers. And I think that both would benefit the city. Unfortunately, we can pick one, and it's a tough decision. Anytime we choose, when we want to pick up, they can see it's not an easy decision. But we certainly appreciate both of their interests. I know it's not always easy to come forward and want to, want to help the city. But I appreciate both of them for doing that. So whoever doesn't get a chance to serve, I hope that they can come back and maybe help us out some other time and some other way. So I appreciate it both of you. Thank you.
Yeah, we did know those statements of Councilman Brown, it was two good interviews. Like he said, unfortunately, we only, they only get to choose one. I hope the one that doesn't get choose will continue to come on and be of benefit to us here with participating in council, because another seat may come open, election come up. So anyway, Councilman Brown has nominated both candidates. I want to ask Kelly to call the roll on, we'll start out with Mr. Staples here.
He's going to call a roll in the council.
Call a roll the council.
Yeah, okay.
And they'll vote either four.
You express a preference.
Yeah. Just, yeah, just say whichever one you want to vote for, what she calls roll.
Jones?
Mr. Staples. Go say.
Brown?
Um, Mr. Staples.
Porter's.
Mr. Staples.
Okay, Mr. Staples got three votes, that's all it takes. Mr. Miller, I hope you continue to participate. Your, your knowledge of the council is very important to us. Your knowledge of the city is very important to us.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and swear Mr. Staples in, and then he can take his place at Staples tonight. So if you'll come forward for Mr. Staples, I'll wait and swear him right quick. I know you've told me two, three times your first name.
Obern.
Obern, okay. Obern, I just raise you right here, put this hand on the Bible. I, Obern Staples.
All right, I, Obern Staples.
Do hereby affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do you hereby affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
The State of Tennessee and the Charter and Ordinance of the City of Westmoreland, Tennessee.
The State of Tennessee and the city and charter?
The Charter and Ordinance.
Charter and ordinance of the City of Westmoreland, Tennessee.
And I say on my oath.
And I say on my oath.
That I will demean myself in my official capacity.
That I will demean myself in my official capacity.
As city alderman.
As city alderman.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And with due regard to the welfare of the City of Westmoreland.
And with due regard to the welfare of the City of Westmoreland.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, congratulations. Take your seat up here at your kind of place. Our newest member, Mr. Staples, he'll be filling the two-year term till election time. Mr. Staples, I don't expect you to be fully aware of what's going on tonight, so if you feel comfortable abstaining, I totally understand.
Okay.
All right, next item of the bid we raise, Dan Cook, paid cross connection certification, I believe it's a 50 cent raise.
I believe it is.
Yes, it is. I make a motion to approve the raise for Dan Crook for his cross connection certification, 50 cents.
Can I say?
All right, motion's been made by Councilman Jones to raise Dan Crook 50 cents on the cross connection certification. Seconded by Councilman Calvert. Ms. Kelly, call roll.
Calvert?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Porter's?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Next item is Resolution R-012023-1, 2023 meeting schedule. And we've got, we've got that list in your package. You can have time before it's reposted into necessary places. Bless you. I have a motion, I have a motion.
I have a motion to approve the resolution, approving the 2023 meeting schedule.
Motion's been made by Councilman Calvert to approve this resolution. I have a second. And motion's been made, been seconded by Councilman Jones. I'll get you next time. Any discussion?
I know there's been discussion about trying to make the meeting calendar or schedule consistent to where all of our meetings were at the same time, instead of having the work study at one time, a regular council meeting at seven o'clock as opposed to six. Would anybody else at the table be opposed to having those at the same time? Both nights being six o'clock, so that way the schedule's consistent. You know, citizens may have a better opportunity to know that, you know, it's six o'clock, I can make that.
Is there anything in the charter or, or, do we have to pass?
I think we need an ordinance. I'm pretty sure that we set those meetings at about ordinance.
So if we, if we approve this tonight, then we would need to go back and do an ordinance, just to change the time?
We'll come back to an ordinance at the next meeting.
Okay.
Just to change the time?
Yeah, just to change the time.
Okay.
I want you to consider this to be first reading of an ordinance. You will make a motion to amend this, to have the meetings begin, all the meetings begin at seven instead of six, including study sessions. Make that motion, that you can really afford this resolutions, and then you'll have an ordinance to pass on second reading at the next meeting.
So I make a motion to amend this.
So the next reading, yeah.
To change all the meeting times to six o'clock.
To six, to six, I'm sorry.
Yes, to six P.M.
So will we change this to an ordinance, this actual line, or?
There won't even be a resolution, be an ordinance.
Probably the simplest, just make this an ordinance.
That way we have to repost it.
You need a second to your motion.
Yeah, need a second, here's.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Staples. Any discussion? The motion on the table is to, first reading of ordinance, to change, to accept the meeting schedule with changing the dates on both meetings to six o'clock. Where one meeting's at seven, one meeting's at six, but both, both meetings, change in time to six o'clock.
Does that, does that work for everybody on this, on this table, at this table? Does that work? Just moving it down an hour is all we're doing. I still think it gives citizens time to get here.
Yep.
And then, that way we can not be so late on some nights. These meetings sometimes we go a little longer, and so we want to make sure we have, also have the time to discuss anything that may be on the agenda for the future or so.
Okay, Kelly, you got an ordinance number, put it be 02012.
I don't think there's any other ordinance yet this month, so it should be 00120231, just change that.
No, we've got, we've got that one.
We do have one already?
Number two, yeah. Look on the second page.
Okay, so it would be dash two, same thing, dash two.
Any more discussion?
There's nothing in the resolution, that's the study sessions. So I mean, this doesn't even set the time for the study session. Do you want to amend this, to say the study sessions will be on the first few Thursdays of each month? So I'm saying this doesn't.
They don't even have time on it, do they?
And handing about study sessions. So all you're really amending is, is the first part where it says seven P.M., you change that to six. Because you already got the others set when you set the notice of the meeting.
Yeah, okay. But we still need to have a ordinance.
Yeah.
All right, no more, any more discussion about it? All right, the first, this will be the first reading of ordinance, 012023-2, changing the time from six o'clock to seven o'clock.
Seven, seven.
From seven o'clock to six o'clock, and the scheduled dates, this will be the first reading of it.
I need to clarify, okay, so we had a motion by Cameron, seconded by Alex, to approve first reading, and then we had a motion by Alex, seconded by Mr. Staples, to amend it, changing.
Changing it to an ordinance and all that.
We need to amend the change to.
They got an amendment, then we'll plan it forward.
Okay, okay, so we need to vote on the change.
Okay. So we're going to vote on the amendment, changing it to from seven o'clock to six o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Kelly, call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Porter's?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Okay, amendment passes. Now we're going to vote on the first reading of the ordinance, the number that I repeated a while ago. And Ms. Kelly, call roll.
Porter's?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next item, the agenda is Resolution R-012023-2, speed limit on Trisha Avenue. two three dash two, speed limit on Tricia Avenue. And I think we've made, uh, suggest twenty mile an hour, over there.
Make a motion to approve the Resolution R zero one two zero two three dash two, um, changing the speed limit on Tricia Avenue to twenty miles an hour.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded by, uh, motion by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilman Brown, any discussion?
I don't think I heard the backstory on this.
It, uh, it actually don't have a speed limit, we're not changing the speed limit, we're setting the speed limit, cause there's no speed limit over there, and that means the speed limit's what?
Thirty in residential.
Thirty in residential, and that's a very narrow street through there, and.
It's a dead end also.
Yeah, it's a dead end, and so we, uh, we wanna set the speed limit at twenty, and then we, so we, there's, I think, been some people, I've had a couple complaints of speeders over there, kids in yards playing, so we'll get a couple signs up, then we can abort it. Any more discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Kelly Colerole?
Staples?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Orders?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, job description changes for the codes and the police chief. Uh, this is not very, uh, it's not, nothing very difficult here, it's just allowing the chief, uh, change, adding some stuff to his job title, as far as being the safety director for the city. Uh, I think the safety director has to be department head, and that's just adding, adding this to his, uh, job, taking it from Gatwood's job description to Chief Jolly's job description, and there's no money, nothing exchanged here, so just changing, changing job descriptions.
I'll make a motion to, uh, change or accept this, change job description changes for the codes and police chief. Can I second?
Motion's been made by Councilman Brown, to, uh, and seconded by Councilman Calvert, to change the job description on this, on Chief Jolly's and, uh, the codes, uh, Lieutenant Gatwood's job description. Any discussion?
Just have one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
On the building codes inspector, on the, I believe it's the third page, under the examples of work performed and duties, I'd like to make sure that, I believe it's the one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh bullet point out, where it says prepare and present monthly reports to the planning commission and mayor, HUD or any other agency has requested, reports to city council of all the codes departments revenue streams and anticipated future revenues, number of building permits issued and growth trends was requested. Uh, just wanna make sure that that falls under the category of the same, um, uh, request that I had a while back, that, uh, we were gonna get a report showing the, uh, ordinances that were, that were dealt with or addressed. And it, it seems like it could, in this description, so I just wanna make sure.
Sure, that's, yeah.
So I wanna make sure that everybody, um, feels the same way I do about that, cause it's pretty important that we know that, cause if we get, as citizens call us, I like to be able to answer to those citizens and say, hey, this is being addressed, or that's not been on our radar. So those are some things I just wanna make sure we continue with that, uh, with that job.
And I'll, I'll give it to him, we'll make sure we, we'll get that to you each month.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was one thing I was gonna try to keep with you this week, just had to get that in, to you, yet, uh, I was asked what was going in behind this building up here with the mural, and at the time they asked me, I still can't tell you what it is, at the time they asked me, I couldn't tell, and that, that's pretty embarrassing that I couldn't tell them what's going in there, so that, you know, information I catch real poor.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Kelly Colerole?
Jones?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Orders?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to, uh, uh, hire a part-time grant writer for the police department. I didn't have a motion to rebut that.
Well, I felt like it needs to be discussed, so I will, I will motion to approve for the second discussion.
Motion's been made to approve, can I second?
Second.
Motion's been made, uh, Councilman Calvert to approve this, seconded by Councilman Borders, uh, any discussion?
Yeah, so it's, and forgive me if I just don't remember, has this come up recently? We talked about it?
It was, we talked about it in the last work study, uh, but I, I think it's a good thing, but, but, uh, after looking at, I don't know if you and Keisha got together and tried, and, and I, I got to looking at the budget a little bit, I think this needs to go back to the table a little bit and do some more discussion, cause if the police, police department budget continues like it's going, it's gonna be way over budgeted, if I'm not missing something. So we've got to try to find something there to maybe correct that, uh, that line out. So I would like to, I would suggest just go back to drawing board, uh, for right now, and have a little more discussion and see if we can find, but I believe, uh, a grant writer would be beneficial to the city if we support.
Can I just say that?
Yes.
It wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't have to be necessarily just for the police department, it can be for the city, and we're gonna try to have this person help us with accreditation as well, but I knew that our budget didn't have it, that's why I brought it to you all to see if there was money, you know, if there's not, there's not.
And I, 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 I was gonna, I was gonna see if y'all was gonna look at that, I have to, too, uh, you know, make the she could write, this person, or she, I said she, but this person could write grants for public works, person could write grants for the street department, and, you know, salaries could come from those particular areas, but that's something we need to sit down and, and see if we can find the money there, because that, we're not prepared to hire that person tonight, I don't think.
I would like to have it back on the table in February in the work study, though. Uh, at least have some kind of a budget analysis to see where the, the money might be able to come from, because likewise, I think a grant writer for the city would be hugely beneficial, even if just part-time capacity.
Do we hold the salary of that person so that we have points to discuss? Uh, there was a little bit of discussion, um, I sent, obviously you would've had, you would've got it, but I hope you all got the, um, I sent her resume, everybody. Did you all get the resume, there's one individual that's.
I don't know if I got it or not.
I sent the resume by email.
Yeah.
A discussion was made about nineteen dollars per hour and like fifteen, twenty hours a week, cause this individual has a full-time job, kind of doing this exact same stuff, uh, and has experience in, uh, department accreditation as well as grant writing.
Uh, naturally, just withdraw or second, withdraw the motion?
Why? Make a motion. That's what he asked, I was gonna say.
And what you know is gonna come back up.
Well, that's motion's already been made.
But this will supersede that.
Supersede, okay.
I would like to motion to defer this into the first work session of, uh, February.
All right, motion's been made for first work study in February, half second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Calvert, seconded by Councilman Borders, uh, there's no discussion on, uh, on deferral. Ms. Kelly Colerole?
Department of Federal West State.
Yeah.
Calvert?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Orders?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I've got to leave, I've got a daughter to fix, going to work the circuit, then building legends, I'm gonna get her. Mr. Staples, congratulations, I wish you best, as long as I do with all the, God bless.
Don't forget about us.
Ah, sure.
All right.
But I'm gonna go later.
Thank you for your answer, Brown.
Okay. Be careful.
Next item in business, ordinance, uh, zero one two, this will be the first reading of zero one two zero two three dash one, budget amendment. And that's in our package there.
Make a motion to pass the ordinance zero one two zero two three dash one, for budget amendment. I'll second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brown to pass on the first reading ordinance zero one two zero two three dash one, budget amendment, and seconded by Councilman Calvert, any discussion?
This was actually the best.
I was gonna say this was for the grant writer, wasn't it?
For the grant writer.
Oh, was it?
So we need to actually defer this.
So, but I didn't, I didn't know that that's what that was, cause I didn't think we talked about any money earned.
I think that was what we talked about at the work study, that, uh, we think that.
Okay.
That, yeah.
The information that I gave Mr. Staples, I did give that to Keisha, just give her an idea, I said, well, this is what was discussed.
Okay.
So she had an idea about what kind of money would be needed.
Okay. Well, this, some, it's.
So make a motion to defer.
Motion's been made to defer to the February second for Councilman Brown. And there's no discussion on the deferral. Ms. Ke, uh, Ms. Kelly Colerole? Is it on the deferral?
Brown?
Yes.
Orders?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next item in business, we talked about this at the work study also, is, uh, participation in Thunder County Drug Task Force, uh, they requested, uh, that Westmoreland participate and supply an officer for that operation, so, um, I entertain a motion.
We make a motion to approve, uh, the Westmoreland Police Department's participation in the Thunder County Drug Task Force.
Motion's been made by Councilman Jones to, uh, participate in drug, Thunder County Drug Task Force, to have a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman.
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Didn't you say in that, uh, work meeting that, that the city needed to be certified before that could, before they would allow us into that task force?
I'm not sure what you mean about certification.
Okay, so this, the.
Oh, no, I know, I'm sure.
Accrediting, okay.
Accrediting, now, uh, for a lot of the grants, we need to have accreditation.
Okay, but now, okay, very good.
Yeah, I'm sure if you ask about now.
All right, any more discussion?
I, I just gonna say, I think it's an honor, I know, I believe, we've never been asked before, in my understanding, and I think it's an honor for, uh, the Drug Task Force, cause it's, it's a collaborative, um, law enforcement agency that comes together, but has multiple agencies representing it. And I think it's great, I think it's great that the caliber of, of, uh, the police department has been excelled, uh, since Chief Jolly has been, um, at, at the helm, and I wanna, wanna thank you for that, and for giving us this ability for someone to, to see, uh, the fruits of our labor, so I appreciate you doing what you do.
Thank you, and I was notified this afternoon that, uh, there's an investigation going on in our city with the task force tonight.
Oh, good, good.
Good, all of that.
And I do know from experience, uh, from being in law enforcement, uh, off, uh, years ago, that, uh, and I participated in the Drug Task Force a lot, uh, they concentrated on cities that they had officers participating in it, if Westmoreland didn't have an officer there, they didn't ignore Westmoreland, but they just, they paid a lot of attention to it, so I think we'll get more attention with having an officer involved there.
That also gives me a seat on the board as well, so we get the same vote as Lilip still, in one of them, so we get a little, uh, you know, so I can update you all of what's going on with the Drug Task Force, and we get a little say on what direction they go.
That sounds good, any more discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Kelly Colerole?
Orders?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, next item in business is, uh, a bank account for shop with cop, uh, I think this, is this the first year that y'all have done this?
It is, one of our new officers kind of took it over, she did an excellent job, um, and it was just a last-minute thing, really, we were able to get, I think, seven hundred fifty dollars, no, it was more, we had, uh, four, I'm sorry, six or seven kids, I think each kid we had enough to give them two hundred fifty dollars each to shop, and we did it at Walmart in Lafayette. We've already gotten, where she had started it, we've got such an interest, we've already got over twenty-four hundred dollars, it, I'm just kinda holding on to it, it needs to go into a bank, but we can't open that account without council's approval, and we're just, well, it'll be the city of Westmoreland, I assume that the mayor will be on it, uh, Ms. Keisha and myself.
Yes, yes.
So that it'll be safe, so that when it gets timed, you know, hopefully we'll have even more money, have more kids participate this next year, and we're gonna get involved in it a lot quicker.
Kelly, uh, Keisha talked to, uh, Mr. Poe, he said we couldn't, couldn't, didn't need to open one up in the police department, we need one open up, open up in the county under the city's name, and that will be designated for that sole purpose.
I make a motion to approve opening up a bank account, um, for the purposes of shopping the cop.
I second that.
Motion's been made by Councilman Jones to open up a bank account, shop with the cop, seconded by Mr. Staples, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Kelly Colerole?
Staples?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Orders?
Yes.
Motion carries, I've got to get used to you not calling my name.
I just keep looking up at all the banks.
Uh, next item in business on the agenda is the fishing rodeo, uh, as you all know, we, uh, Mo Taylor, every year had a, uh, fishing rodeo at City Lake for the free fishing day, and, uh, sadly, he cannot do that no more. But, uh, Mr. Davis at the, uh, lodge here in Westmoreland, the Sonic Lodge, called me, and their, um, Sonic Lodge here in Westmoreland, and Sonic Lodge in, uh, Fairfield, they want to carry on this tradition in, in, in honor of Mo Taylor, and, um, I told them I'd make it for council, that they're gonna do it the same way as Mo did, uh, they've done talk to, uh, TWRA by Stockton Lake, and TWRA's on Stockton, just like they always did, so they, they won't, uh, they won't use the lake that day, for that reason. Shall I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion, we allow the fishing rodeo to continue with Westmoreland, Fairfield, and Sonic Lodge, second.
Motion's been made for Councilman Brown to allow the, uh, Westmoreland and Fairfield and Sonic Lodge to carry on the, uh, fishing rodeo here at Westmoreland Lake, uh, any discussion?
Do they have a date yet, or are they gonna keep the same date?
It'd be, it'd be the same date, whatever fishing, that, whatever free fishing day that is, is, uh.
In June?
June, I think, I think it said June, I think you're right. But, uh, I think TWRA allows one day for free fishing without a license, and whatever date that is.
It's January.
First Saturday in June. First Saturday in June or the one right before Father's Day, or the two?
Yeah, yeah, I'm about to.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Uh, we still, and we have an agenda item that we give, we budget for that every year, just.
Yes, yes.
For those of us who may not, who probably hadn't looked at, or had got just stated, budget much, we do, we do participate in giving that, that item. That, uh, fisher does some life by giving the money from the city, so, and their use of the city lake.
It's June twelfth this year.
Well. In fact, you gotta enter that right on.
All right, any more discussion? Ms. Kelly Colerole?
Jones?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is the sewer plant change order number two, uh, this has been brought up once before, and, uh, there were some questions that we needed answered on, and I think, uh, Logan got with, uh, Mr. Bradley on this, and I think everything is, is good to go on it. So, if I can get a motion to, uh, to approve the change order number two, this money, that it's already been approved, and, or, the second, this will be covered in that second law that was-
How, how much are you approving sewer plant change order number two?
Motion, motion's been made by Councilman Calvert to approve the sewer plant change order number two, and seconded by Councilman Jones, any discussion?
I would like to, go ahead.
I was going to ask, Mr. Bradley, do you want to comment on, on the conversation?
Well, I haven't talked to Mr. Dickerson since he sent me his proposal, so I think we may be all to defer this for the next meeting. Okay, that's all right, and when I talked to him back in December, he said this wouldn't really be critical to March or April, because of the way the schedule is going to go, so I would feel more comfortable with that.
Good.
That's all right, let's just defer that to the February meeting.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to defer.
All right, motion's been made to defer, I have a second.
Second.
Motion's been made to defer sewer plant change order number two to the February meeting, and there's no discussion on the deferral. Uh, Calvert, Ms. Kelly?
Is it Calvert's name?
Yes.
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Staples?
Yeah.
And Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries. Our last item on the bid, on the agenda is opening the bids for, uh, these light hole setting for the, uh, AMI meters, and I've got those bids here somewhere. Nope, got it, got it. Now, I can go right into the bid open, I don't have to do it. All right. All right, right here. First bid we want to open is, uh, is, uh, Grove Construction, and the second, we've got two bids, the second bid is from Tri County, and they both have same specs to go by. Tri County will be more difficult to open than the other one, but here we go. All right, uh, Grove Construction, our electrical service says we're pleased to provide our proposal for the above referenced project, uh, scope of the work is provide labor equipment and material to install the following, and it's quality, quantity twenty-two by fifty-five feet, class three wood utility poles with crowns, and third bid to do this is sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars, ten cents. That's Grove Construction. And Tri County, Tri County is, uh, can furnish and install twenty-two fifty-five by two wooden poles with ground bar in the city of Westmore for its new water AMI, AMR system, for a total of estimated cost of twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. So, there's the two bids, uh, this, uh, these poles have to be set for our, our, um, AMI.
Yes, sir.
They, they put AMR, but say AMI, right, for our water meters to operate, so. I entertain somebody to accept, a motion to accept one of these bids.
I'll make a motion to accept Tri County's bid to install the twenty-two poles for our AMI system.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded by, motion by Mr. Jones, Councilman Jones, and seconded by Councilman Brown, to accept the Tri County bid, twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars for the twenty-two wooden poles. Any discussion?
Yes, if, if you want to make sure you won't tell them or read the part on there, I think he's put it there, but it, uh, is there something about me digging the holes and rock?
There is, there is a rock clause, which I'm sure there's a rock clause in both, but there is a rock clause in, in, in the contract, uh, if they do hit rock, will include an additional two hundred and fifty dollars per feet of rock, so if they hit rock, it's going to cost a little extra to get that hold of.
Yeah.
If we move down to Rocky Mountain, it's going to be a get away from ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's harder here than it was there.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Kelly Colerole.
Brown?
Yes.
Borders?
I have the time, please.
Staples?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Motion carries for, yes, one obtained, so motion carries Tri County, Winston, the bid. That's the last item on the agenda, other than that very important item.
Move to our turn.
Motion's been made to adjourn, it's not to debate. Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you.